Six o'clock and I'd like to call the March 4th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting to order, Columbia County Planning Commission Meeting to order. If you would stand with us and Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation. Commissioner Henderson will lead us in the pledge. And gentlemen, if I could ask you to please remove your caps while we're in the meeting. I appreciate it.
Stand by with us. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for another beautiful day. We want to thank you for the blessings you've bestowed upon this country. May I ask that you look over us, look over our first responders, our communities, militaries, they protect our country, our freedoms. May I ask that you look over this meeting, guide us, have us to do the things proper, all these things. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. By the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, the religion.
Thank you, be seated. And if I could remind you to please silence your cellphones. And if you've got some extra seats around, please wave your hand so we can get these young men and their dads seated. We do have all five commissioners present tonight for 100% quorum. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to read the minutes from or review the minutes from the February 18th meeting. If there are no changes to the text, I need a motion for approval.
I move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? We have four with one abstention as Commissioner Henderson was absent last meeting. Gentlemen, you've also had an opportunity to review the agenda for tonight. If there are no amendments or additions, I'd like a motion for approval.
Go move.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion approved the agenda as submitted, passes 5-0. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on March 16th, 2021 at 6:00 PM in this same auditorium. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden and she'll give you a request to speak for them to complete and submit. We're less formal in these proceedings tonight, so if you'd like to comment on anything that we've got in one of our public hearing opportunities or public hearing presentations, please raise your hand. We'll ask you to come to the microphone and spend three to five minutes giving us your opinion for or against. If you want to address something that's not on, it's something that's not germane to the public agenda or the public hearings, we do have an opportunity at the end of the meeting for general public comments. If you'd like to speak then, same thing, please raise your hand, come forward and then give us your thoughts and opinions. That being said, we'll move right on into our first presentation of the evening. We have some ladies here that would like to give us our Vision 2035 update. Said it'll take us no more than an hour and a half to make it through the presentation, so.
I'll give you the fast version. Good evening. My name is Courtney Reich. I'm with Goodwin Mills in Kew. We are the consultant for Columbia County, working with y'all on putting together this update to your comprehensive plan, Vision 2035. I want to thank you for allowing me to come and talk to you tonight. We're here at the, nearly at the end of the process. In fact, we were here exactly a year ago to present to you in the opening public hearing and we're here tonight to talk to you about the results of the public engagement and how the plan has been updated. Next slide. I want to start by reminding everybody that the comprehensive plan-
If I could ask you to stop. Sir, could I ask you to move your hat, please? Thank you.
The comprehensive plan is based on requirements. In fact, it's actually regulated by the Department of Community Affairs, Department of the State of Georgia. They set the rules for comprehensive planning and for the updates to comprehensive plans, which is what's happened here recently. Failure to follow that guidance and to adopt your comp plan by the date that they've set for this county, which is June 30th, 2021, could result in the loss of qualified local government status, which would make the county ineligible for state funding and various programs. So it's just important to keep in mind that we are following a prescribed process and requirements for this plan. So this slide right here shows you the actual outline that is required for a five-year update. And so every five years, the Department of Community Affairs wants you to look at your plan, every 10 years. So on the opposite, you know, every 10 years, you're doing a full plan update and then in that midterm, that five-year period update, which is what we just did. As part of this process, we looked at your goals, we looked at the needs and opportunities, we looked at the community work program, which used to be called a short-term work program, but they now call it a community work program. That's really your action plan. And the land use element is part of that, as well as a newly required broadband element, which is in this document. And a transportation element is required, which is actually covered by arts, Augusta Regional Transportation Study. Next slide. There are benefits to comprehensive planning. It is a requirement of the state, but of course, it does provide benefit to the community. I think it's important to keep that in mind and this is really why it, why there is value in going through this process. One of which is, and probably the most important part, is to give the community a voice in the vision for the county, allowing people to participate in a community engagement process so that they can share with, as well as the staff and elected officials, what they would like to see in terms of future growth or future opportunities within this county. It allows for smarter decision-making, which of course can result in a more efficient use of tax dollars because you're coordinating all different aspects of the county. There's many different departments and functions that are based within the county. This allows you to look at all of those together and talk about how can we do this in a more coordinated fashion. Of course, it allows, because it guides your zoning ordinance for protection of private property rights and community resources. And it does foster economic development. On the next slide, this is one, a slide I probably showed at the beginning. I like to talk about this when I am talking to communities about comprehensive planning, that they actually did a study at UGA and determined that having a comprehensive plan, regardless of what you said, but just having a comp plan and following it and revisiting it and looking at it on occasion, actually led to an increase in employment that was over 25% over five years in all of the communities they looked at. Because it allowed for investment in the community by companies that trusted that the local government, what, local government was engaged in its own future and that it was developing a plan and following that plan. It allowed for those, those investments to happen because they knew that somebody was minding the ship. So the process for putting this plan together, this is a very simple process. You gathered data with census data, looked at that data. We went through a public involvement process that was, had several avenues for involvement, which I'll talk through in a second. Based on the input that we received, we updated the goals, the needs, the opportunities and that future development strategy, as well as the action plan or the community work program. And all of that together formed the updated Vision 2035 comprehensive plan. This is the public involvement process. It included, up to this point, six steering committee meetings. We did an online and in-person or hard copy community survey that had over 1,000 respondents. There were two open houses or workshops that were held, as well as three public hearings, this being the third. Next slide. This shows you the detailed schedule and like I said, it started a year ago. So this process has been ongoing for a year. Of course, we had to pivot a little bit because this public involvement process happened right as COVID happened. So what, what we had went from being a very in-person suite of opportunities to some of those being online. But we felt very good about it. You can go to the next slide. And actually even the next slide. Because we were actually able to engage so many people online because we were, had to pivot to those online opportunities. It actually allowed for folks who otherwise might not show up at a meeting to offer opinions. But I think in the end, we actually were able to get quite a lot of community. That was a picture of the steering committee that you just saw and of course, everybody was in this room and still separated. It was during COVID, but the steering committee met very regularly and we had some very dedicated individuals that donated their time and participated in this process and we're really grateful for that. This shows you a list, but there was a total of 35 people who were appointed or represented local organizations that are listed here. And next slide, I think, has their names on it. We, again, we want to thank these folks for their help during this process and their participation. This slide here shows one of those online opportunities when we actually had a community or a steering committee meeting online right after COVID started. And we did a poll everywhere where people were taking, answering questions by phone. And we asked people to type out or give us one word to describe the future that they wanted to see in Columbia County. And based on the number of times a word was mentioned, it's bigger in this image. But I think this really shows, is a great way to visualize people's vision for the community in terms of desire for successful and quality growth, being progressive, being safe, preserving the county, the natural resources, the history and making a very, or resulting in a very thriving and vibrant community. So I, there are nice, nice ways to gather input from, from the steering committee in an online fashion. Next slide. The community survey, so if you go to the next slide, this shows how many folks actually responded to the online survey. Hopefully, some of you were able to take it as well, but we had over 1,000 respondents, 97% of whom actually lived in the county. We were able to dissect this data different ways because it was in an online environment. We were able to pull out, look at results based on, we could look at just what folks in the county thought or people of a certain age group or people in a certain district. You could dissect the data all those different ways. You can see from the two pie charts that we had a really good cross-section of folks in terms of age groups and a lot, more than half, by a lot of the folks that responded had lived in Columbia County, not only lived in Columbia County, but had lived here for over 15 years. So folks who had a lot of history here. Next slide. These are the top three reasons that the respondents of that survey said they wanted to live or said they do live in Columbia County. Quality, pace of life, the quality of the schools and the general aesthetics and attractiveness of the county were the top three vote-getters. Next slide. These are the issues that people were most concerned about who responded to the survey. And they really focus around growth, managing that growth appropriately and making sure that development that comes in meets a certain standard, as well as addressing traffic issues. And then economic development appeared several times in terms of job creation. And then green space preservation and recreation, making sure that those, that quality of life and those features that make this community so beautiful are continued to be protected. We also had two workshops and unfortunately, we had originally planned to have many more workshops, but we had two. They were in different locations on different days. We were hoping to make it as convenient as possible for as many people to attend. Next slide. So we had them on a Monday and a Wednesday in June. One was at, one was here, one was at the Columbia County Exhibition Center. And they each had stations. These were more land use based, so we were trying to get people's feedback spatially about where there were different issues within different areas of the community. And we had 284 people actually participate in the online opportunity that was offered here. About 60 people came in person. Next slide. And this just shows some of the key words that we heard from a lot of folks who were there answering online or were showing up in person. Again, featuring a lot about recreational opportunities and green space and also addressing or identifying traffic and transportation needs. So I'm going to move into the plan itself. The community vision is one of the first sections of the plan. You can go to the next slide. The community vision has various themes. Those themes are supported by goals and then each goal has several strategies that are identified to help achieve it. That's really the structure of the community vision. And the needs and opportunities that were identified by the public, that public input period, went into inform what the goals and strategies were. And each strategy ends up having an associated action item in the action plan or the work plan. Next slide. This just goes through, it's very, I'm sure you've seen it, it's a pretty long document, so I don't want to go through each page, but I just wanted to walk you through some of the major themes and overarching goals. So you have the development patterns here, which really talked about the various goals related to land use, vibrant activity centers, protecting rural development patterns, things of that nature, improving corridors and connectivity. Next slide. The next theme was resource conservation. This was primarily future goals related to protecting green space, protecting water resources and improving water quality and of course, protecting historic resources. Slide. Social and economic development. This was obviously related to supporting the business community, encouraging and creating employment opportunities, as well as in creating more recreational opportunities for residents. Next slide. And then intergovernmental coordination. You live, obviously, in an urbanized area. There's a lot of other local governments and agencies, federal installations that also can impact folks, people's lives and quality of life here in Columbia County. It's really important to reach out to them and be coordinating visions and activities with these agencies. So we recognize that in this plan. So I wanted to give you an example of how the strategies, how the goals influence the strategy. So you can see here that under this, this is an example of a goal, which was to enhance recreational opportunities for residents. This was one of the social and economic development goals. And then there was three specific strategies underneath that. So this is where we start to get very specific, continue to expand the greenway, updating the recreational master plan and coordinating with partners. And then on the next slide, I'll show you how, oh, that slide didn't come up, but though each of those strategies would have had a actual line in the work plan. You can go to the next one, yeah. So anyways, the community work program or the action plan, each of those, like I said, each of those strategies has an implementation activity. And for each of those, we identify its timeframe, when, you know, when specifically it's supposed to be implemented, who is supposed to do that, what it would likely cost, at least in order of magnitude, if not specifically, and then of course, where the funding would come from for those. So that, that you can find in the action plan. Next slide. Okay, oh, it's just out of order. So this, when you see that strategy, you can see here, this is what the strategy looks like in the vision and then what it actually turns out to look like when you get to the action plan in terms of updating the recreational master plan, which is currently underway. And we talked about completing and adopting the Parks Recreation and Events Master Plan. They gave a timeframe, the cost and which strategies it actually met. The report of accomplishments is a look back at your old work plan. So we actually went through the process of looking at all of what you committed to do five years ago and where you're at with those commitments. Those items that weren't done yet, but you were still, that's still relevant to the county, we included in this work program and some of those fell, fell away because they were no longer county priorities. This is the process going forward. So we're here, we have a final draft. We've been receiving public comment on that draft since, I guess, February 1st. So for the last over month, we've had it open to the public for those comments. We are coming here tonight for the public hearing so that we can hear in-person comments if anybody here has those comments to make. And then on the 18th, we will be asking for a resolution to transmit this document to the DCA and the, our, the Regional Commission. Those are the two state agencies that will be reviewing this document to make sure it meets state standards. And I will say before that, before that review, we'll be incorporating the comments that we've heard during the public comment period. I should make that clear, that we'll be updating this, this draft document now. We'll have a final draft, it'll get submitted to the DCA. They will get back to us and let us know if they have any comments. Generally, if they have major comments, we would have to come back to the public. If they're minor comments, the county can choose to, to address them or not. It would be awesome.
Does the resolution come from us or from the Board of Commissioners?
Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
We'll address, if there's any major comments from DCA, we'll address those, but the comp plan would need to be adopted. It will come back to the county for adoption by June 30th of 2021, that should say 2020. But it is a requirement that it be adopted by that date. So any, any questions?
You know, I think, how many folks are here, were on the committee? Okay. I think at this point, maybe we could open up comment for you all from the folks here if they would like to make a comment about the plan rather than wait till the end of the meeting?
Yeah, I think that's ideal.
Okay. All right, let's do that. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it, Courtney. And we've got a couple of members here. Anybody that'd like to come up and, and make a statement with regards? Yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Hello, my name is John Allen, 4357 Deerwood Lane, right around the corner. I'm here tonight. I've grown up here and raised my family here, so I've been here a long time. I'm also fortunate enough that we do business here in Columbia County and built some beautiful buildings in, in this county. I feel very blessed to have done so. I think you guys agree because a cup, a picture or two of those buildings are in that, in that Vision 2035 information that you guys provided. I've read through it and actually have got a couple kind of a broad, broad questions. And want to kind of get into some of the various things that I read. It certainly would have been helpful to have the presentation before I had to read all the stuff, but, but nonetheless, I read through it and I had a couple, I had a couple of questions. On page five, it says, and if you, if you don't mind, let me kind of read the things that I spotted and then I'll get to my question.
Mr. Allen, one thing, to answer questions, you know, Mr. Sterling, would you like to do that or should we bring Courtney back up to answer questions? How, how do we need to handle that?
Let's, let's hear what they are first and if, we'll kind of tag-team it.
Or do we need to break, have a breakout afterwards and just get the, the questions on record and go-
Yeah, I think if he can, you know, get his two, three, four questions, whatever it is, we'll, we'll kind of address them after, kind of one by one, after each of the speakers.
Okay, all right.
Okay. On page five, it, it states the Vision 2035 is a policy document, okay? Page eight, it says the purpose of zoning and subdivision ordinance are to ensure that local regulatory tools support the implementation of the future development map and specified goals in this plan. Comprehensive plan is intended to provide a legal nexus. That was the word that got me, okay? For the, the application of these development regulations, all right? And then, and then there's a couple other areas that, that I read. And that is on page 24, it is important to be reviewed on a regular basis to determine if amendments are needed based on a changing market and demographic trends. The map is intended to be a living document, okay, I thought that was a key term, with revisions made when deemed necessary or every five years as currently required by DCA. On page 28, as, as the different character areas develop over the next five years, it may be permissible to allow development to extend beyond the areas shown for the individual character areas in the future development map. Okay? So my question is broad and that is, how rigid is this document meant to be? Is this a policy or is this a guide?
Mr. Sterling.
You see, you see the conflict.
Absolutely. And I, I don't think this document can supersede anything that's in code origi-, now, this is merely a guide for us to develop in the future.
Yes, and let me answer, it's kind of, the question is kind of twofold. You've got a little bit of the, your mention of the lec-, the legal nexus. So it is a policy document, it is not a legal, it's not an ordinance, it's not something that, you know, is specific in that regard. However, it is the basis by which we are then allowed to do the zoning ordinance and put in those required regulations. So that's part of that legal nexus. You have to have a comprehensive plan, your vision, your policies. These are what we're trying to accomplish. This is who we are, where we're going, kind of thing. To then implement that, we have to have rules and that's your zoning ordinance. So the, the idea, the question about is this a rigid document? That's a, it's not a hard and fast yes or no answer. I think in certain instances, there's going to be some, you know, yes, we are going to adhere to it because it is a, a vision or a policy that we do want to have specific, whatever it is. So therefore, we're going to be, you know, very specific, but we're going to, in, I think in part of this document, you see, there's meant some changes in this update that we're trying to be flexible where possible, but within certain parameters. And I think in particular, as it relates to the character areas, typically around the activity centers, we have, you know, whatever that shape looks like. And what we're hoping for is that it grows outward in terms of the development, not jumping to the edges or jumping just outside of the edges and then, you know, trying to pull it in or, or whatever the case may be. So again, that's, part of this update was to kind of redline or fine-line that, if you will, adding that language in there that speaks to, our policy is, is that we'd like, you know, the activity center type activities to be within the activity center itself. If they're going to be developed, we'd like it to be from the out, outside, or from, excuse me, from the inside out, instead of jumping to the outside automatically and then trying to piggyback out into the adjacent character area, whatever that may be.
I understand.
Yeah.
And thank you for the clarification.
I'd like to, to ask one question. Some of the language that's in this document probably is required because DCA requires this document?
Yeah.
That be correct? Yes, ma'am?
So that you're on the, on the recording. Yeah, some of it is specifically required under DCA standards.
Yeah. A legal nexus is what, the, the idea behind it is just that development strategy meant to be the basis, that our rezoning decisions aren't arbitrary, have some basis. That's when we're saying a legal nexus. App becomes, app becomes a zoning document. That's that a comp plan is a policy document. Right, you decide how much that, yeah.
Home rule.
So you get, you guys understand.
Absolutely.
Okay. And, and in my career, guys, as a result, something good doesn't happen because of those things. Y'all agree is good, it just can't be changed because of those things. And the reason I mention this is, there's a lot of regulations. There's many, many more to be added. If you look at the implementation program that's included in the document, those things, am I, am I wrong? Those are some additional guidance things that are added over 21, 22, 23.
Right, they are, they're action items that, none of them are legal or required, but yeah, they are things that the county has said that they want.
And I understand that. I, I understand, there's nothing but the best of intentions, but there's a lot of stuff in there, a lot of stuff. So I, I just wanted to share with you, I mean, I've enjoyed the benefits and we've all enjoyed, I think, the benefits of a growing county over the past, I mean, if you, if you look at their data from 28, 2000 to 2018, it's like, just, just shy of it, a lot of growth. Come with challenges, but it's also created opportunity. And then if you look at the projections going forward and I know, comments was a little term projection, helpful, but the anticipation, if you do the math, it's about half, about 5%. So a little bit, I guess, anticipated. I just don't want, I'm a conservative, I, you guys are conservatives. I, I, I believe in judicial freedoms, property rights, certainly understand the need for Asking, guys, as a recommending body, sit or when you're at a lot of regulations, may be some consequence. Please, I'm here is to ask, make sure that you sit up carefully.
The bottom line, though, is none of this supersedes the county code. And that's the big bottom line, to answer your question.
Sir, appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir, thank you. Ms. Gornowitz?
I had the privilege of serving on the steering committee and I thank you very much.
Give us your name and home address.
Oh, okay. My name is Jean Gornowitz. I live at 4210 Long Cove Drive. I had the privilege of sitting up there. Many years ago, I was also the chairperson. I also served on this committee. I, the big thing I took away from this is I want things to be flexible, fair, and I want this to be a guideline. Don't want it to be hard and fast. As John said so eloquently, we need this to be living. We need to change it. Our county's changing daily, for the better, I will say. I mean, look at the growth we've had in this county. Look at the things we have because of growth. We've got a beautiful park, we have a judicial center, we have a library, we have more things going on out in the county. We've got Blanchard Woods, we've got a performing arts center. These are all things because of growth and because people want them. Let's not put ourselves in a box that we don't have any growth, no flexibility. I don't see it controlled, but I think we need to have some flexibility and look at it in that way. Questions, anything?
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your service. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment on the record? Yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name and home address. Yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
My name is Joe Todd, 931 Big Oak Circle, my home address. Thank you all for letting me speak for a few minutes. I, um, have also reviewed the document, I wasn't a part of the committee, but I've been, um, you know, in touch with quite a few that were on the committee throughout time and have been keeping up with it. And I want to tell you guys all and ladies that I understand the importance of the document. I think it's great to have document on file, and I think it's good to have that, you know, type of guidelines as you go forward. I wanted to give you a quick background, um, I'm a builder and developer, so it's probably difficult for me to stand here and talk to you about some things related to housing without seeming like I may have my own interest, um, in play, but that's really not the case. I want to talk to you about just growth and some of the challenges that I see. If you don't mind, I'll just kind of go through some notes that I did.
Absolutely.
Going through the document, and then maybe a few questions. I would say we live in one of the best counties in the state, if not the country. That would be, that's, that's why we have these type conversations, these challenges we're facing. A couple of things, I have some questions about the population numbers that were in here. So projections, by 2050 is an increase in population of about 173,000 people, that's what's on the chart. So I just did some kind of quick math, I kind of assumed, uh, three people per household. I didn't take six into, into consideration like our house, or maybe somebody living by themselves, but for quick math, three people per household is about 57,900 more dwellings needed over the next 30 years. If they're all living in the county, I'm assuming we're saying by population, those are people who are moving here. Currently, there is like 75 houses on the market total in Columbia County, so you can kind of take those out of the equation, there's not a whole lot of new opportunities right now. So that's about 1,930 permits per year needed, if they're all purchasing homes. And they're not all going to purchase homes, right? So if we assume like 80% of them buy a house, which is what we hope, people are coming here for great jobs, good income, and able to buy a house and grow families. That's about 1,500 new permits needed per year. That's a total new dwellings needed of about 46,000 over the next 30 years, okay?
Let me ask one question, so, so you're assuming everybody's going to buy a new house, you're not taking resales into consideration?
I'm just saying total houses purchased, but I'm saying if the population's increasing by 170,000, and we're using the three multiple, there's only 75 homes on the market. So people leave and people come, that's a net neutral because that's not population growth, that's kind of what, okay, so, does that make sense? So I'm saying, we need an additional 46,000 dwellings of some kind, or, or new homes if we do the 80% model for purchases. That's about 1,544 new permits per year, okay? From 2010 to 2015, the county averaged 1,194 permits, residential permits per year. In the last five years, we've declined by 20% to 962 residential permits. All you hear on the news is that demand for housing is at an all time high, but Columbia County is going down in the number of permits currently. Um, and there is a reason for that. I can go through a lot more of that, maybe in a subcommittee, and many people that are on the committee, I know Keith Lawrence, Jason Winkler, some of these engineers that work in development, they can tell you some of the challenges we're facing, and the reasons that we can't, um, maybe meet demand, or maybe build better quality neighborhoods. Lower density does not equal better quality, in my opinion, but that's a whole other discussion, but it's, I think it's easily defensible when you start looking at our numbers. So the county has a goal in here, if the population's going to increase, somehow the permits are going to increase by 40% or more, per year on average. I don't think that's achievable, if you review the 2035 vision plan. I don't think the neighborhood types that are allowed in there are going to allow us to get to those type numbers. So I just, just some quick math on the acres, I have some questions about how the future plans were created, that does show where neighborhoods could be created, um, and it does show like land that might, could be developed. Average neighborhood, 2.2 units per acre, that's kind of been our average with the last five or six that we've done. Um, I've been, I've developed 600, 700 lots myself, but I've been a part of Maybaum for a good while as well, and worked alongside some great people who I've seen master plan thousands of lots, and it's a challenge right now to get many more than 2.2, that's the numbers I used in here. So for 46,324 more homes, we would need, at 2.2 units per acre, we would need about 21,000 acres, okay? 21,000 acres. But we got to talk about actual usable and unusable, it's not just the number of acres we need. Definition of development land, access to utilities, must have good access on our roads, must be free of rock and other negative impacts that affect development, must have an owner that wants to sell, right, that's a big part of it, and it has to meet the growth management plan, which we're discussing tonight. I would say, given those scenarios, best case, one out of three, if it's all in play. So if you do that math, now we need 63,000 acres, 2.2 units per acre. I just don't know that the math adds up, I don't think the population growth will be there. And I don't want to be a builder personally that lives in Columbia County and drives 100 miles to, to build and develop and grow somebody else's community. I want to do it just for my own personal benefit.
What do you say an ounce needs to be, you leading up to something?
Sure, well, in that regard, I think there's a way to build, I think you have to have some higher density, I really do. I think that the current restrictions and guidelines create a low density environment. And I know there's been a lot of discussions about drainage problems and all, but, and, and Will may have some great ideas, Will's really good at his job. There's, you know, conservation districts, there's smaller lots you can do, and you could have, make up an example, 50 acres, but 25 acres is very dense, you have less utilities, less infrastructure on that part, you have the resting green space, you can still achieve green space, but I think higher density is, is a big part of it.
And then more, and then more people per acre, what do you do about the traffic problem?
Well, more houses per acre, doesn't mean you're necessarily yielding a whole lot more, but you... Or you look at the map and you say, you know what, we, we can't stop at William Few, and we can't only develop 60 acres or 80 acres around the Harlem Interstate, or whatever those couple of growth nodes are. I would be really curious, page 27 has a development roadmap, it identifies land that could be developed, based on the green and the yellow, right? Do we know the actual acres that exist in this map that have not been developed? Has anybody studied that as part of this plan?
So we could pretty easily, and I'll, I'll go and tell you what, what I told Keith. Uh, one thing to remember, this thing's a, this is a five-year map shot on that map. We're going to be talking about this again in four years. Uh, so don't think of this as a, we're, we're set for the next 15 years, can't do anything. That's not the case. Um, so that's one thing that you guys need to kind of realize, is this thing can change real fast. And again, the, the way that you guys are going about it, I understand where you're coming from, but again, that five-year window is the one that needs to be focused on.
But we do expect this to change, obviously, we do, and that was, I know it's part of John's question, we certainly think it's going to evolve, and we certainly see this as a living document.
And it may change faster than that.
Yeah, and I would certainly add to that, that this, what we're talking about here tonight is a prime example of exactly what you're asking about. We have made changes within this plan, within page 27 on the character area map itself. Those, not everything has grown, but some things have changed from what they were at the 2016 time, uh, snapshot in time. So we have adjusted where, you know, reality is a little different today than it was five years ago. So I think, you know, to your point, we have taken it into consideration. It may not be all that you want, or, you know, certain other people want. It's not all that, you know, we may want. So I think there's been some give and take on that, um, some, you know, inherent reality of, in the next five years, this is all we're going to anticipate for expansion of utilities, or, you know, where those might actually occur, and where you want them to occur may not entirely jive, and you know that, and we...
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I'm not on the agenda.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that's just one of those things that, that's going to continue to evolve, and that's why we do this, not because it's required, but because we need to, in a fast-growing community, we need to kind of stay current. It's not necessarily practical to do a year-long study every year, or every two years, but we're, we're constantly looking at it, you know that.
Well, and I think, I appreciate you saying that, one of the things, as a home builder, and that's really my primary focus, and my primary profession, is at some point, you can't just raise prices, you have to start cutting features. And I know we want higher quality neighborhoods, and nicer features, and better quality homes, but at some point, we put in smaller trim, and at some point, we put in smaller cabinets. I'm not as good at it as the national guys, I, I just can't compete, they buy sheet rock regionally. They don't buy lumber from people here in town half the time. There's a lot of things that, that when the free market's there and the demand's there, somebody's going to meet the demand, but it doesn't mean the local guys can't. Just want to make sure we're doing what we can to create better neighborhoods as we go along and grow our families. I want to give you a quick example, Amazon is an example, okay? There's now being some things developed and rezoned in that area a couple of years ago that wasn't really a thing, so I'm glad to hear that's, that's evolving. But you take $20 an hour for an employee at Amazon, that's 41,600 a year. 30% is, is kind of the going rate for what they can spend on a house, that's about 975 a month. Their purchasing power's 160 to 170. We don't have that product in the county. I'm really concerned about housing affordability, not for my own pocket. We'll be fine, and we'll find places to build if it's not here, we want it to be here.
That person married, and does the spouse have a job?
That's a factor, so you can sort of double it.
Well, you add that factor into the process.
You can certainly double it, um, but, so if you double it, that's fine, right? But you, but you're, not everybody's going to be married, certainly people when they're starting out aren't going to be married.
Well, I have a, I have a question, when you speak of high density, what, what does that look like? Are you talking townhomes, or duplex apartments? What, what specifically, or generally, do you mean by a high density?
Not necessarily apartments, we don't build apartments, but on per acre. By side, but townhomes is a way, um, more cluster development, smaller lots. You can have the same spacing between houses, but you can't have smaller lots, and there's probably a lot of other things.
Or like an Amberly type thing in the Riverwood complex?
That kind of stuff, yes, sir.
Every time I mention Amberly, somebody says, well, it's not practical, because if I've got four units and I sell two, I'm hung with the other two. Can't tell you how many times I've heard that.
Somebody wants a pre-sale, you have to build off forward, just to build.
Because Ms. Garnowitz and I have had that conversation many times, and she says there's a great demand out there, but nobody seems to want to be able to try to go after it.
Yeah, that's certainly a thing with that product.
I would think too, I'm, I mean, I've been on this committee for over five years now, and I've had large groups of people standing where you're standing, shaking their finger at us, because there's a river running through their backyard, or in between the two houses, because the houses are jammed together like this, because of the small setbacks. I think there's a, I, I think there's room for conversation in the right scenario. Certainly, I don't think the county wants to prevent you from doing, doing your business, but, uh, there's a lot of people in the county that think that the product could be better with planning, and so it's, it's, uh, takes time to make the right decisions. Your input's really welcome.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, I think that's...
But, you know, there's a lot of people that are in here on different meetings, there was a previous meeting where they're really, really mad about, about water, water runoff, because there's nowhere for the water to go, because everything.
Well, I think, for example, mass grading is a, is a great way to, to create better drainage plans in the beginning, that's been something that's been a challenge.
The developer's going to have to be responsible for that, as opposed to the individual builder.
You've got to masquerade 20 acres at a time, you know, you've got to be able to cut all the swells, and there's a lot of reasons why certain neighborhoods weren't planned right, and other... But I don't necessarily think larger lots fix drainage problems. I think that it's also, not, not that every builder hasn't had a drainage problem or two, we come back and fix ours if we do, but, um, I don't know that the county should be directly involved in drainage problems, if somebody buys a bad car, I don't know that they get to take the field of complaints on that either, you know, I kind of wonder what the balance is a little bit with, you know, as long as we can create better, I want to see better quality neighborhoods. And I really think, and this just kind of feels a little bit like maybe more restrictions are coming, and that's just increasing cost, which means features go away.
You know, high density per acre of houses doesn't solve the county problem either. You always remember that.
Which, which part, which problem?
High density per acre of houses doesn't necessarily solve the county's problem as well as the problem for the numbers of people that are coming.
And that may be the case.
I disagree with the fact that we can put a lot more density per acre.
And we may not have the population growth that's in the list, it just may not happen, and that may be, that may be part of the county's plan, I guess that's my question. It, has the acres been studied, is really what I'd like for her to be able to address eventually.
You know, if you look at those numbers, at, at least we're growing. If you look at Richmond County, between now and 2050, they're adding 5,000 people?
Not much.
Yeah.
Not much.
And I hope it remains that way, I do, love it in here, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and make a comment regarding the Vision 2035 presentation? Speak now, or forever hold your peace? I'll close the public hearing.
Just make one quick, yeah, let me just make one quick, uh, comment to, uh, to allay any fears, uh, that may be out there in the public. Uh, I don't think the Columbia County government is restricting the number of building permits issued in a given year, in a given time period. So I think that's, that's something that, um, whether that's been out there in the public or not, I'd like to allay your fears that we're not restricting them, and there's been no discussion of that. So if, you know, average is 1,400 per year, we, you know, I don't think we'd be opposed to that. Certainly at the staff level, you know, we process all that come before us, so, um, I'll just leave it at that, you know, that, that number can be as high as it developers and the builders can, can get there. And I understand it takes time to get the infrastructure and get the, you know, get the developments in place, to have those lots on record, but that, that's not something that the county is potentially throttling back.
I've been, been on this board for going on 14 years, and I've never heard the conversation one time about limiting the number of permits that we issue. So I'd, I'd like to put that fear to rest, but, you know, speaking, and again, I'm not a builder, but speaking to some of the builders I do know, materials cost right now may have as much to do with the slowdown as anything, I don't know that for sure, but...
I, I suspect it's materials, it's also labor force, it's a number of factors, and, you know, we all have to be aware of that, and I think, you know, I think from my perspective, the, the county is well aware of that.
Yeah, and frankly, you know, and, and not to get political, but the political climate in the country right now may have something to do with that as well.
That's why I left that to you.
Yeah, so, anyway. I know, uh, I'm in the advertising business, and I've got a couple of, of car dealer clients, and they've noticed a significant slowdown since the change of administration. So there's a lot of folks out there that are suspect as to where we're, we're going to be going over the next few years. But that being said, uh, if any of you here that came for the Vision 2035 would like to leave, and as opposed to hanging around and watching the rest of the machinations of the meeting, that's fine, ladies, if y'all would like to leave as well, I know y'all have got to drive back to Savannah? All right, but again, we thank you all for your participation and for helping us out on this. And, uh, again, if you've got input, uh, we still have an open window of opportunity if you'd like to submit some things to be included.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
But you can always, but you can always reach out to the planning staff.
Right. All right, so we'll move on with the course of business for this evening. Mr. Butler, got a massage operator's license for Sebby Farinity?
Sure, uh, this is a license for, uh, Sebby Farinity, perhaps? Uh, DBA Sister Relief by Sebby at 3685 Riverwatch Parkway, and also offering mobile massage services, she meets all requirements of the ordinance, staff agreement's approval.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for Sebby Farinity, doing business as Sister Relief at Sebby at 3685 Riverwatch Parkway, Suite 100, and mobile massage services.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Lengthy motion. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, provisional home occupation for Blue River Pools?
Yes, sir, this is a provisional home occupation request at 1223 Grant Road for a pool construction company, as you may have gathered from the name. This is the location of the property on the north side of Grant Road, just west of Lewisville Road, uh, and the aerial of the site. The applicant also owns this parcel behind the house parcel, so he does own a total of 17 acres here. Um, the applicant does, of course, live on the property in the existing house, and is proposing to use the existing barn in this back corner for storage of pallets of rock and pipe, um, and an existing carport to park work vehicles. The applicant has indicated that the storage in the barn would be less than 500 square feet, which is less than 50% of the house on the property, which is 2,200 square feet. They, the barn is at the back of the property, it is separated from the, the road by quite a bit of distance, and from neighboring houses and residences. And there is actually kind of wetlands and flood plain that run through here that kind of separates the, the barn and this proposed business activity from any of the neighboring houses. Uh, so there, there's not really any particular concern with impact on the neighbors with this business, um, with the proposed size. And the applicant does have three employees, however, they do meet at job sites, and they don't travel to this property as part of the business operations. So there's, uh, no significant traffic to the site outside of occasional deliveries of material. Um, this is right off Lewisville Road, um, this is the first driveway off of Grant Road, on the side of Grant Road, uh, so it should have minimal impact on, you know, the rest of the residences on Grant Road for any delivery traffic. any delivery traffic and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? And you all are satisfied that uh, the, the narrative will prevent any outdoor storage of materials, pipe, you know, pool forms or any of that kind of good stuff?
Right, so per the, the provisional home occupation ordinance, he has to operate in accordance with the narrative and the site plan he's provided. Um, if he's operating outside of that, that is grounds to have his business license revoked.
This is not a public hearing, so gentlemen, I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve provisional home occupation, Blue River Pools.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Ms. Neal, Tua.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a temporary use authorization at sixty-four ninety-two Washington Road on two-point-four-four-eight acres, currently zoned RA, residential agricultural. Shows the location of the site, west end of the county on Washington Road. This shows the zoning of the site with RA and R4 surrounding it. And this shows the site plan. They just plan to put a twenty-two foot uh, travel trailer there while they are building their house. They're in the process of selling the house that they live in right now and as soon as they sell it, they're moving in with the expectation of applying for permits mid-March. And they're in the plant, um, planning phase right now and expect to have the house completed by September of twenty-one. Um, this shows an example of the travel trailer and staff recommends approval.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, ma'am. This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve temporary use authorization at sixty-four ninety-two Washington Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Ms. Montgomery, preliminary plat for Crawford Creek South Phase Ten.
Yes, sir. This is a preliminary plat for Phase Ten of Crawford Creek South off William Smith Boulevard. Um, this is part of the Crawford Creek PUD. Um, this is kind of the, the newer back section of it. This is the final phase of Crawford Creek South. Uh, this is the preliminary plat, which includes fifty-two single-family lots with a minimum lot size of eight thousand square feet and an average lot size of nine thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-three square feet. Uh, setbacks are a minimum of eighteen feet from the right-of-way and a minimum of ten feet from the side and rear property lines in accordance with the approved PUD. Sidewalks and street trees are provided on both sides of the road and four-point-seven-three acres of open space is provided in this section and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Crawford Creek South Phase Ten, fifty-two lots located off William Smith Boulevard.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Ms. Montgomery, preliminary plat for River Pines.
Yes, sir. This is a, a small individual kind of preliminary plat for five lots at the end of Mulliken Road, um, on just over seventeen acres. Property's located at the end of Mulliken Road adjacent to the river and is currently zoned R1, single-family residential. Uh, the applicants are proposing to subdivide the property into a total of five lots. Um, this Lot Five has the existing house on it and they're using the existing driveway for access to the four new lots. Lots will have a, a shared access easement over that driveway. The lots all meet the requirements of the R1 zoning district, being at least forty-thousand square feet in area, um, with setbacks of eighty feet from the center line of Mulliken Road, ten feet from the side property lines and twenty-five feet from the rear property lines.
Ms. Montgomery, before we go leave this slide, would you mind circling the existing house since all five show proposed-
That, that is actually the existing house. Um, you're, you're correct, it is kind of mislabeled on the, the plat, but there is an existing house on parcel five.
Thank you, ma'am.
Are they tearing that down? Okay, so the, the engineer is here, he's indicating they are removing the existing house, so that is a, a new proposed house.
Right.
Um, this plat does include extension of a water line along Mulliken Road to provide water service to the parcels, um, but the lots will be served by individual septic systems. Um, a soil survey has been provided and reviewed by the health department with this plat and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff?
How does this, how's this differ from the one further up? That had, that had what, thirty-nine or so?
The one that was related to the rezoning request?
That was, that was for R2.
Yeah, it was-
Totally different.
Well, humor me.
Okay. So, I mean, the other one was a, so-
That doesn't count.
So the, the other one was, uh, R2, which is ten thousand square foot lots and they had what, twelve thousand square foot lots in that one?
Yeah.
Uh, and this is R1, very different in terms of what it looks like, how it functions.
Twelve thousand, twelve thousand square feet. It was, if I remember right, five homes they were trying to get in there?
Oh, there were thirty-some odd homes going in there.
Thirty homes.
Oh, yeah, it was a much bigger development in the middle.
You're talking, you know, three or so acres a lot here.
I'd be talking the same thing. But anyway, we're talking here, we're, we're at one and a half acres.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Uh, seeing none, I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table. This is not a public hearing, so, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for River Pines, five lots located at thirty-nine fifty-one Mulliken Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. We have no final plats, plan revisions. Uh, the first item in our public hearing tonight, uh, the applicant has asked for us to withdraw without prejudice, uh, to, I guess, hear this at a future date. However, since we have advertised this, we'll go ahead and conduct the public hearing, but this will have to be re-advertised?
No, this is, uh, they're asking to withdraw without prejudice, um, it's my understanding, and Nana will, can speak to this, uh, more extensively, but they're going to revert back or, you know, go back to their previously approved plan and implement that.
Okay, all right.
Nana can speak to that.
Thank you. That being said, Ms. Mystery?
This is a major revision to a current zoning of S1 Special. Location is three-one-three Baston Road on twenty-nine-point-two-one acres and the use is Augusta Christian School. The request, uh, is a major revision to revise the approved landscaping access requirements to Phillips Drive. This is the location of Baston Road, zoning which is S1. Um, when you saw the rezoning last year in twenty-twenty, it was multiple parcels. It has been combined into one lot. This is a close-up of the aerial. And these are the photographs that were submitted from the applicant to show the existing trees and screening along Phillips Drive. And these photographs were just taken a couple of days ago, um, on Phillips Drive and the request was to, sorry, the original, um, revision last year was to expand the school and change some of the parking, um, layouts and do a master plan for the school. And this is what the approved plan looks like. This is the close-up of the, um, development plan that's closest to Phillips Drive and there you can see the future classroom buildings. Um, this one is under construction and, um, you can see that the change along Phillips Drive, the, um, buffer and screening was, uh, recommended in the condition to go along that full, um, distance to protect the residents. So part of the, um, discussion of, from the applicant of why they wanted to, um, keep one of the drives on Phillips Drive was they wanted, um, extra access for, um, farm marshal and farm engines. Um, but the farm marshal has confirmed that the existing approved plan, uh, meets all requirements, they don't need to change it. So the approved plan from twenty-twenty, um, showed the landscaping and fencing along, um, Phillips Drive over here. Originally, the applicant didn't want to install that part and, uh, keep the access, but since we, staff has met them on-site and explained the reasons why we're keeping, um, we would like to keep the landscaping and screening along there and recommend disapproval on the request, they subsequently, uh, agreed to put that in and that's why they're withdrawing the request revision. And this is the future land use map. So the request is to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, Mr. Walden. Come forward, give us your name and home address and anything else you'd like us to consider.
Let me look at my notes here, I'm not texting anybody. Us Walden at a forty-three-seventy Deerwood Lane, Evans, three-zero-eight-zero-nine. Uh, just to confirm what Ms. Mystery said, she came out, I believe it was last week, with another member of the staff here or not, and after we talked about everything and I saw what they wanted, uh, it was very reasonable. And so, just to let everybody know, the, uh, Utility Location Service Department came out Wednesday to locate utilities. That driveway's gonna be taken up tomorrow. Begs landscaping has been contracted, they've ordered the shrubs to add to the bottom of the trees there. Uh, our own maintenance guys are taking down the four-foot fence, it'll be finished next week, the demolition of that. And Augusta fencing has been contracted to install a new fence. He said that he could have the fence up within three weeks, but those green slats, whatever reason, take longer to come in, so it may take extra weeks on that. Once we do that, uh, everything will be-
Thank you, sir.
They saw what had been done.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against? Yes, sir, please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Evening Commissioners Planner. My name is Raymond Smith. I live at thirty-six twenty-two Phillips Drive. I'm a retired thirty-year vet. Chief Warne, I was almost retired, I'm still running around doing government business. And I'm glad to hear this, uh, these comments. However, I wanted to, in, bring up a note, because I sat during the last meeting here, June second, I spoke here, and my concern, because I've been monitoring this, is that we put a suspenseful timeline on this and that was for the November timeline, you know? And our concern from the neighborhood perspective is that, you know, that we keep watch of this because we have a twenty-twelve running, relaborment for Augusta Christian making actions happen. I'm no longer running around Iraq and Afghanistan, I like to be able to see these things done, you know, not to a point that years, years later, you know, these trees that we're installing take five to ten years to grow and a lot of this ongoing operation in new buildings that they're putting up is right in my front door. Now, if I decide to sell this house or whatever I decide to do, I like to be able to see some effort ongoing that, just not to come here and say that we're doing these things and the timelines that we put for the ordinance don't get added. So I like to, that's why I'm here tonight, to make sure the, the panel understands that as I sit here and look at all of these ongoing efforts, I'm looking that this should have been completed in November and here we are in March and I saw a parcel fish go up in February, you know, a four, a two-foot fence, you know, that served as a gate and I'm like, what is this? So that's the whole point I'm here tonight is that, you know, I'm all for development and growth because, you know, I majored in urban planning, I'm fully aware of what that is. So when I look at what they're doing, I'm happy that they're doing that. However, Phillips Drive, it has a bigger concern that we want to see a boundary before we run a lot of buildings right up into our front door. So we really want to see that happen. And so, since I'm the guy, the youngest guy there, everyone else is eighty-eight or better, I'm the mechanic, the house building, everything else on the neighborhood there. So now that I'm retired, I do a lot of work around the neighborhood and I'm just trying to make sure that this comes to fruition, that this stuff happens. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, table, or withdraw without prejudice.
Chairman, I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice, file RZ zero-three-zero-one, Major S1 Revision, three-thirteen Baston Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to withdraw without prejudice? That's just five zero. Ms. Montgomery, file RZ two-one-dash-zero-three-dash-zero-two, conditional use for a gym.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a conditional use for a gym at four-seventy-two Flowing Wells Road in Unit G2. Uh, this property is on the east side of Flowing Wells Road, north side of Mason McKnight Junior Parkway and is currently split-zoned, C2 General Commercial and M1 Light Industrial. So the building we are looking at is on the M1 portion of the site, um, which does require a conditional use for a gym to operate. This is the aerial of the site and see the existing, um, basically office warehouse structures on this property. Um, this property does about the residential development immediately to the north. There were originally buffer conditions when this entire parcel was to be rezoned, C2. Um, they obviously kind of reduced the amount of the property that was to be rezoned, so those conditions don't really apply to this section. Um, the proposed gym will operate primarily five AM to eight PM, um, and they have indicated all of the classes will be indoors. Uh, they don't intend any outdoor activity on this site, although they, they could if they chose to, uh, have some outdoor exercising. Um, however, it is a, a light industrial use already, there's a lot of automotive, um, businesses, a lot of contractors' offices. Um, the gym probably won't be any more disruptive than those existing light industrial uses. Here's a, a photo of the existing site. And in terms of future land uses, it's within the Interstate Activity Center on the future land use map. Um, this is a designated employment center. Um, primary future land uses is commercial uses, serving local and regional users and light and heavy industrial uses. All, all the proposed gym provides a commercial service for this area and is appropriate within the activity center and staff recommends approval, um, with the condition clarifying that the conditional use applies only to Unit G2 on the subject parcel, um, that was at the request of the property owner. They want it only to apply to the, the one unit, so there will only be this one gym in this one unit on this property.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
How many, uh, how many, how many people will be using this?
Uh, so the applicants indicated they would have up to thirteen students per class, um, up to two instructors, though potentially fifteen at a time.
So a single class will start at five AM, but one could start at, say, eight AM?
Potentially, yes, sir.
And, um, where are these people parked?
Um, in the, the parking spaces on the site. Um, there are parking spaces associated with all of those buildings, um, so they, they can use those.
The middle building, the very center, oh, the one just south of that.
Well-
Yes, that used to be mine.
Oh.
I had three, I had three parking spots and couldn't use them because the guy to the right, guy to the left was encroaching and the guy across was encroaching. So I would have to park all the way at the end and walk down. Not an issue for me, but if you're gonna have thirteen people parking in here and maybe getting there at seven o'clock before the people that work at eight o'clock get in, but there, there is a potential issue with some of these renters having, you know, saying, "Hey, my employees need to park, where are my employees gonna park?" And so I would just suggest if the applicants here is to designate specifically a parking area because there is not sufficient parking in this development for thirteen people for one parcel.
Plus how many employees?
Plus employees.
Okay, that being said, is the applicant here? Yes, sir, would you come forward, give us your name and home address? Wait till you get the microphone if you don't mind.
Austin Akins, my address is five-zero-six Anne Drive, New Ellington, South Carolina.
Austin, would you, would you mind spelling your last name?
Akins, A-K-I-N-S.
All right, and could you address the Commissioner's concerns?
Oh, yes, sir, great question. Uh, can I show you on the board?
You can draw on that, actually.
Uh, okay. Uh, so right now, this is our building that we, we have six parking spots up front. Uh, we actually park right here, our two employees park down here, and when we do have a full class, we have parking options right there and right there that they also park at. And so far, it hasn't been a problem yet.
All right. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition, file, file RZ two-one-zero-three-zero-two, conditional use for gym at four-seventy-two Flowing Wells Road, Unit G2.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Prove all against? Motion to approve carries four one. Ms. Neal, file RZ two one zero three zero three.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a rezoning from S one to R one. It's S one special to R one, single-family residential at eight forty-one Halailey Farm Road on one point four zero eight acres. It is currently zoned S one special for a greenhouse nursery and a single-family residence to be on the property. This shows the location of the site, just near Washington Road and Halailey Farm Road. This shows the zoning of the site. It's S one zoning and it's currently surrounded by primarily R one zoning with some of the C two, C one along Washington Road. And this shows the aerial of the site where you see the residence. And this shows the existing site. The current property owner and applicant is requesting to rezone it back to R one, single-family residential. It's a new owner. The previous owner had requested for it to be zoned S one special to run the greenhouse nursery on the property. And the current owner has no intentions of doing so. And under the current S one zoning, the applicant is required to adhere to the site plans and narrative that were approved with the previous S one special zoning, which restricts him from utilizing his property with any R one zoning without coming back to get a revision to that narrative or site plan for the S one. The property is, this shows the plot of the property. And it's currently located in the neighborhood's character area on the Future Land Use Map, which is intended for Singapura Residential and supporting supporting businesses. And staff recommends approval.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve RZ twenty-one dash oh three dash oh three, rezon from S one to R one.
Do your second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? To approve carries five zero. Ms. Montgomery, file RZ two one dash zero three dash zero four.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a major PUD revision on two parcels just down the street a little ways at eight fifty Ronald Reagan Drive and seven thirty-two North Bel Air Road. So they are just down the road with frontage on Ronald Reagan, North Bel Air, and Williamsburg Way. And currently zoned planned unit development. This is still part of the original Marshall Square PUD that was rezoned in two thousand and four. The most recent revision was at the end of two thousand and nineteen, which approved this parcel for a mixed-use development. As the aerial decided, it's currently an undeveloped property. And a couple photos of the existing site. And this was the approved plan from that two thousand and nineteen rezoning request. The request before you tonight is to revise this concept plan. The main building we're going to be looking at is this one here, which we're going to see is going to change. Basically, it gets split into two buildings. One of them gets pulled out to the edge on Williamsburg Way. And this brings the building up to that street frontage, helps encourage the pedestrian-friendly environment in Evans Town Center, which is desirable from a planning standpoint. So overall, staff is in support of this revision. This is in that Evans Activity Center, which is a mixed-use center. This is intended to be a denser, walkable center with mixed use. These centers are generally characterized by compact, walkable, higher-density development, very much in keeping with the proposed revision to the site plan, bringing that building up to, to the sidewalk into Williamsburg Way. Staff is recommending approval with the condition that all the adopted conditions with the two thousand and nineteen revision still apply, just to avoid any confusion in the future.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Is there anyone that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Okay. Yes, sir. Is there any way we can increase that view?
I guess while they're trying to figure that out, this is Ronald Reagan. So the Performing Arts Center is here. Maybaum Building is kind of off to the bottom of it. Yeah, okay.
I'm Wish Mark Walter. I live forty-four fourteen Deer Run, Evans. I just, you can't tell on y'all's website, their document that y'all, that y'all were giving. I'm not just pushed this stuff out, but you can't tell from that document what this thing really looks like. So I'm trying to understand. The building moves closer to the middle, is what you're telling me?
Yeah, yeah, zoom back out a little bit.
I know.
That's a little too far. So the original building was here, that U-shaped building was something like that. And so what they've done is they've split that into same number of units. It's now here and here instead of that U-shaped building.
So does anything happen back there?
No. So that's the Bel Air Road frontage. That won't change. This is all parking lot in this area. And they don't have any plans to, to connect or provide access from Bel Air Road.
But it was parking lot before?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, it was. There's no, no way to get up or down that road unless you're in a vehicle, though. Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make, I couldn't. I couldn't read your online.
Yeah, access will be from Williamsburg Way and Ronald Reagan at the signal.
I'm just backing the same way now.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Looks good to me.
Right? Yes, ma'am. It's Wish Mark Walter. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve with condition file RZ two one zero three zero four, major PUD revision at eight fifty Ronald Reagan Drive to revise the approved site plan.
Do your second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Ms. Mystery, file RZ two one dash zero three dash zero five, R one to R two.
Yes, so this is a location at nineteen fifteen Williamview Parkway. The acreage is six point four one. And the current zoning is R one, single-family residential, and the request is for R two, single-family residential. Here is the location on the north side of Williamview Parkway. And this is a zoning map that shows the R one current zoning. Surrounding zoning that you can see in yellow is Chastain, Ashbrook, and Chamberlain Bridge subdivisions. They are R two, RCO, residential cluster overlay. And sorry, there was, the blue color to the north is a PUD zoning that is residential two. And then you've got Columbia Middle School and Grove Town High School just to the west side there. You've got Canterbury Farms subdivision, PUD, to the south. This is the map that shows the topo and the flood zone. We included this just to show you the extent of environmental impact on this site. You've got the slope that's roughly about ninety feet across the site that the developer will have to work with in terms of a plan. A concept plan has been submitted. It's not presented at this time. This is a close-up of the location. Again, you can see the extent of the wetlands and flood plain on the site. Here's a plot of the property. And some site photographs. This is the concept plan that's, that's submitted with this rezoning. If the rezoning is approved by the Board of Commissioners, you will get to see the concept plan as a, as a submittal. It shows approximately seventy-five lots at the moment. R two zoning does allow lots up to as small as ten thousand square feet. The R one current zoning, the lot size required is forty thousand square feet and thirty thousand meters square. We included this map of the Greenway just so show the location of it. It is built out around this, this part. And the side is where the star is. The Greenway that you can see is running north to south, connects some of the subdivisions there. And this is a map that shows the Greenway, Greenway that is, is built. It runs from Patriots Park all the way through south of the site there and across to Canterbury Farms. This is just to show the location in relation to the site because one of the conditions does require the development to connect to the Greenway. Here is a street view that shows Chastain Place entrances to one side, the side you can see there. And there is some, some talk of widening in the future, but we don't have any plans of that right now. There is a Williamview crossing that is used by the public. And one of the conditions is requiring the sidewalk connections in the neighborhood to a sidewalk on Williamview to the Greenway. These are a couple of aerial shots of the Greenway just to show where that is in relation to the site as well. The Future Land Use Map does show this as neighborhoods and the zoning request for R two does meet the character area and the density, and staff is recommending approval to R, from R one to R two. And we have several conditions, which are the minimum five-foot sidewalk is required along the entire Williamview Parkway frontage. Sidewalk connection to Uche Creek Greenway should be provided and must be included with the first preliminary plats in the middle. Greenway connection shall be installed to the first developer lot in conjunction with the first phase of the infrastructure improvements prior to release of final, first final plat. Left and right turn lanes are required on Williamview Parkway. Improvements along Williamview Parkway must include a ten-foot minimum shoulder carbon gutter, street inlets, and other drainage safety measures in order to accommodate a required five-foot sidewalk.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? The applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Please give us your name and home address.
Dean, I'm with Cranston Engineering Group, four fifty-two Ellis Street, Augusta, Georgia. And I'm representing G and G Developers. The applicant for the rezoning. As, as far as I know, you know, we, we have prepared a concept plan. We've submitted it to planning. We've been working with Nana and Danielle to, to work through the conditions of that plan, and we anticipate possibly submitting that as early as tomorrow to come before the Planning Commission at the next meeting. Are there any questions that I can answer? I know Nina's covered it.
Gentlemen? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ twenty-one zero three zero five, rezoning from R one to R two at nineteen fifteen Williamview Parkway.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Mr. Butler, we have two variances tonight. The first is file VA two one dash zero three dash zero one.
File is a request for a variant, section nine H one thirty-nine, buffers and screening at forty-three twenty-one Evans to Locks Road to reduce buffers. It's industrial property. It's currently zoned C two. And also undeveloped. This is the location of the property on the north side of Evans to Locks, a short distance from here. And we have the zone of the property again currently zoned C two. You have to the north, some M two, which is our general industrial. It also has M two across the river tracks. And across the street, you have C two and AR. Airview of the site again, undeveloped. Also the existing site. And also the plat of the property. Their request this evening is to reduce the buffer between, you can see it here, it's shown as the, basically twenty-foot MBL would be a twenty-foot buffer if it was, if it was constructed without the variance. They're asking to reduce the buffer down to the ten feet that's shown here. The reason that you have the buffer between the M two and the C two is so that they can, basically, the M two is of much higher use, or much more intense use than C two, so it has to buffer against C two as well. Then the C two provides a twenty-foot buffer on its side for a total of forty feet. We're probably going to look at that in the future, how that kind of works but doesn't work in some respects. The request here is to reduce it down to a ten-foot structural buffer with the fence on the inside, towards the building here, the, all the landscape on the outside towards the M two property. While, while they're doing that, this is, the, the application or the, the business is Pause in Paradise, which is a resort and spa for cats and dogs. So they do have outdoor play areas, as you can see here. So again, having the fence against that is more, is better than having the landscaping inside the play areas, which will probably get torn up throughout the use of the other property. In terms of how they're fencing off these different play areas, you can see here, they have a six-foot, excuse me, white solid vinyl fence, and they also have eight-foot black, black, eight, eight-foot black chain link fence with vinyl coating that will require variation, which they will be applying for in the future with the building as well, to kind of go over some of the materials with that. So that there is a condition in regards to, to that actual chain link fencing. In terms of the request, they are, they're reducing it. They're not eliminating it. It actually still meets the use standards in case someone were to rezone the property next door to residential. We're not having to, you know, talk about that. In terms of this, staff has determined approval of the following condition. Chain link fencing on the approved, provided plan is not approved with a submittal. Will require an approved variation. We require an approved use of another chain link fencing. That includes staff recommendation.
Thanks, gentlemen. Any questions to staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Please give us your name and home address.
Hill Quarter, Blue Water Engineering, eight forty-two Sparkleberry Road. Here on behalf of the applicant, we're the project engineer. And basically, the purpose of this is if they were to maintain the twenty-foot buffer in order to have circulation from their existing site back out with the building, they wouldn't have no rear yard. And the, the plan here is there will be multiple play yards. They'll all be heavily screened, and they just need that room at the rear of the building to exit the dogs out of the rear of the building various play yards. And we just felt like the, the landscaping on the outside of the fence would make more sense in terms of buffering the neighboring property. Going to have a lot of heavy fence screening anyways. All of the, in, in addition to the, the fencing in the buffer areas, the, the fencing in between the, the play yards will be the same. It'll be a solid black vinyl fence, so the dogs don't see each other in the different pick a fight and that kind of thing. But it will have a very nice look from the exterior. And then at the front, like Will pointed out, it will be a dressed-up fence, a very nice white vinyl fence, similar to what they already have in other portion of that facility. So it'll look nice from Evans to Locks Road. It'll look nice from the neighboring property.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, any questions to Mr. Quarter?
Oh, well, Will said cats and dogs playing. Is that what our hopes are? We're going to have a play yard?
I could have been wrong about the cats. Yeah, I don't think they take the, the cats out to the play areas. The, the play yards outside will be for the dogs, unless the cats misbehave. Then they get sent out to play with the dogs for a while.
I just needed some clarification there.
Nine o'clock.
Any other questions? Don't involve cats for Mr. Quarter? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA two one zero three zero one, reducing the buffer width at forty-three twenty-one Evans to Locks Road.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. And our final public hearing for tonight, Mr. Butler, file VA two one dash zero three dash zero two.
File is a request for variances through several sections. We're going to look at nine H one thirty-nine, nine H one forty-seven G ten B, and nine H one thirty-three A seven for property located at sixty-six ninety-seven Washington Road. Currently split zoned C two and CC, community commercial. The location of the property, again, north, north end of Washington Road towards the edge of the county line. Also the current zoning, you can see how it is split zoned here. You do have this large property to the north zoned R four. We'll, we'll talk about here in a minute. Across the street, you have more R four and also S one for a nursing home. And to the south is a C two, which is a storage facility. Again, it shows the aerial view of the site with the existing convenience store. Also a picture of the existing site. The plat of the property. So the, the, the reason for the variance this evening, the applicant is requesting or is planning to expand the site with a retail shop and a drive-through bait shop, which I find to be very interesting. And that will trigger all non-formulas on the site, which is, includes the, mostly it's the use provisions that, that kind of triggers that. But then you do have some of the requests with the buffers and also the parking that goes along with it. So we'll kind of work through it as we, as we look at the site plan. So the first one we have is a reduction in the buffer. Again, this is currently zoned C two and CC. Property to the north is zoned R four. Between C two and CC and residential property, you have a thirty-foot structural buffer. However, you see on here, it says USA Jay Strong Therman Reservoir Clark Hill Project is owned by the federal government. And it has lots of uses that don't fit in R four. So this functions more like an S one, more like a commercial property. So eliminating that buffer against, against this, staff sees no issue with doing that. Also with a kind of a fun Also, with a kind of a fun part of our code is the feds don't have to abide by zoning regulations either. So it's, again, even if you rezoned it, they don't have to. So again, no issues with the elimination of the buffer there. You also have a, with the use provisions, there are several things with the use provisions. You have a 100-foot setback from a residential zone property, which would include, I believe it goes into the retail shop. And again, using the same argument, this is not a residential property, it is zoned R4. That condition, or that requirement, staff is comfortable waiving that as well. There is also a 10-foot structural buffer between residential property and a convenience store with the use provisions. And we've already eliminated, are, are planning to eliminate the 30-foot buffer. So eliminate 10-foot buffer makes sense as well. The last one with the use provisions, there are several with a, with a convenience store. They currently have a requirement, they cannot operate between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM in the morning. Basically, have 24-hour operation. According to the applicant, the bait shop will be open. They've, they've indicated probably 4:00 AM is earliest, however, they would like to have 24-hour operation of the convenience store itself. Again, when people come in to get bait, they're going to go on to the, late to fish. They can be doing that pretty early in the morning. So they're requesting to revise that to 24/7 operation. Staff does, does have some issues with that, mostly with the lighting and also noise during those times. There is a condition that's going to be recommended that any lighting on the, excuse me, on the site will be shielded and directed away from adjacent property, mostly across the street. And also that will require a photometric site plan that shows it being five-foot handles or less at the property line. Also, with deliveries, that has been revised to say that they can deliver between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM, again, to kind of keep it where it's, it's meeting noise ordinance in that respect. Lastly, we have a request for the parking. This is for a gravel drive right here. They, the applicant has indicated that this is a rural area. There is, across the street at the nursing home, there is already a gravel drive being used. Also, this will be used by trucks. It's one that, you know, staff does not see there is an issue with allowing them to have a gravel drive with the situation that they're in with this property. There's a condition with that, that it only applies to the actual drive that's shown on the property. They can't go and have on the rest of the area. Again, this does show a picture of where the addition will be. It will be over in this area. And then also, you'd have more clearing to the left of that as well. Overall, staff recommends approval to the following conditions. Again, screening is not waived for any dumpsters, roundtable, mechanical, electrical, HVAC, or other above ground utility equipment. All site lighting will be shielded and directed away from properties across Washington Road from the subject property. And again, a photometric plan, if a five or less, required at site plan review. Then we have all deliveries to site, dumpster pickup may only occur between hours of 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM. And use of gravel is limited only to the progress of gravel drive, driveway. The bait shop is shown on the product concept plan. And that concludes staff recommendation.
Thanks, sir. Gentlemen, any questions, staff?
Will? What's the direction of that drive-through? Cars come in and pick up and leave?
So I'm, again, they can verify. I'm assuming you do this, drive in, bait, or you want one together.
In the building?
In the building. Again, they can explain it more. It's kind, it's cool. I, I was impressed.
Is the applicant here? Yes, would you come forward and give us any additional information you'd like us to have? Please give us your name and home address.
Thanks. 44 Waterville Road. I'm with Southern Partners Engineering Company that the applicant has hired to work with y'all and pull on this thing. He is here if he have any questions about his operations. But yeah, we, and, and one thing, when I saw this and he brought it to me, we looked at putting this at different locations and really this was to get away from some of these setbacks that kind of knew where they were. Will told me where they are. And it's really, it'd be really difficult to go. I was looking at flipping this thing, but in addition on the other side, it just really didn't work that way. And also, there's one thing that wasn't mentioned, the drive, gravel drive we have now, there's already a gravel driveway. Original access to the rear of the property. Or my client purchased it. Doesn't fit exactly, doesn't tie to his driveway, but it's there. And, and to answer your question about how that works, they do drive, they pull into the bait shop. They have more for like the, the striper fishermen, they come in, they have, they, they put water from the tanks that they have inside and also the minnows. There's also the location that is shown on here, trucks and boats with the grain field to plan. It would us from coming from the other direction with that driveway.
In the retail space, is that going to be an expansion of the convenience store? Or is that going to be a separate tenant?
It's going to be a separate tenant. Yes.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm very familiar with this piece of property. They've got plenty of room to do what they're talking about.
Thanks, sir. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve VA 21-03-02, variance to section 98133 parking.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, with conditions?
With conditions, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
That can still hold? Question? All in favor? All opposed? Abstaining?
Abstaining.
Right, okay, so we have approvals four, zero with one abstention. And we have no legal matters? Do we have any staff or commissioner comments? I think I would be remiss in my duties as chairman if I didn't recognize our newest tax assessor member, Mr. George Bratcher in the back. Anybody has a problem with their tax assessment on an annual basis, he's the new guy to call.
Stick around.
So congratulations, sir. We appreciate your service. Do we have any other staff or commissioner comments?
I'd like to point out that, that we, we voted on 132 potential new residences tonight. And we vote on a lot, I don't know how many we've ever declined. I know there's always a lot of, there's a lot of back and forth with how to build the neighborhood or what have you. But I think the numbers that were referenced by Mr. Todd earlier are more affected by the willingness of the builders to bring it to us, not the unwillingness of us to move forward. So I just wanted to, I just made a note, 132 lots tonight.
And again, I'm not sure they're taking resales into their accounting.
I'd really prefer to save what I really think about.
Are you saying you held back for once in your life?
Yes, sir. I bit myself a little bit.
Do we have any other commissioner staff comments? Do we have any public comments? What little public we've got left? We appreciate you. Yes, sir, please come forward. Give us your name and home address.
Colbert, I'm at 471 Cambridge Way.
Would you spell your last name first?
C-O-L-B-E-R-T. My wife and I own Outdoor Guts at Riverside Park. Kayak rentals down there. I just wanted to put a name and a face with what we do down there.
We've rented from you before. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments? Seeing none, time is upon us for adjournment. Gentlemen, need a motion?
So moved.
Do your second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion at all? All in favor? All opposed? Meeting's adjourned at 7:38 PM. Next meeting is March 18th at 6:00 PM in these chambers. Who won tonight?
Pretty sure I did.
I did not.